Where are you getting all this electricity?
Here.
Anna Smith?
Here.
Sari Basakun? Trish Bodie? Paul Gauthier? Nikosi Nelson?
Here.
Francesca Robbins?
Here.
It is 6:15 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. It is my pleasure to welcome Cadet Gina Cisneros from the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC at Vista Ridge High School to lead us in the pledges tonight. Gina, the daughter of Omar and Dominic Cisneros, is a junior at Vista Ridge High School and an active member of the Lone Star Company's color guard, physical fitness, and unarmed drill teams. Cadet Cisneros takes pride in serving the community as a volunteer at Veterans Memorial Park and local Adopt a Road cleanup. She has competed in several NJ ROTC competitions, including Lehman High School's Sea Lobo competition, where the Lone Star Company scored first place. Cadet Cisneros is a dedicated model citizen who has volunteered over thirty hours of community service. Her commitment and service to sharp personal appearance and dedication make her an exemplary role model for others to emulate. Cadet Cisneros' actions reflect most favorably on the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC, Rouse High School, and Leander ISD. Well done, Cadet Cisneros.
Oh, please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all. Now the Texas pledge. Honors and citizens of Texas, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
If you will join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you again to Cadet Cisneros. If we can give her one more round of applause. All right, next we're going to move on to our spotlight on learning, and we're going to hear from a few of our fabulous students and staff from River Ridge Elementary School. Come on up.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Board members, Dr. Gearing, visitors, and those watching at home. I'm Dr. Sally Sosa, and I'm the proud principal of River Ridge Elementary. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share how we engage our students and have them take ownership of learning and how we engage our families through Genius Hour. I have with me tonight...
I'm Gareth Cook, the Assistant Principal at River Ridge.
I'm Alexandra.
I'm Sam Blake.
I'm Kias Colwell.
I'm Brayden Alley.
I'm Angad.
I'm Benton Acton.
I'm Mary Ann Krupa.
I'm Vivian Ramsey.
Awesome. These wonderful fifth grade students are going to help share how we do Genius Hour. So Alexandra, could you please tell us more about Genius Hour?
Genius Hour is where kids can wonder, question, research, create, and present their ideas. What skills are we building? Well, when we wonder, we are pursuing our interests. When we ask questions, we are... We are thinking about things in new ways. When we do research, we inquire about a topic by asking and conducting research. When we create, we can make ideas based on what we learn. And last but not least, when we present, we can effectively communicate with others to present our ideas. That's what Genius Hour is all about.
Thank you Alexandra for sharing the steps that we take during Genius Hour and the why behind it. Genius Hour is a campus-wide practice. So each of our classrooms are experiencing going through these steps as they build innovative skills and help develop the skills in our district's graduate profile. A big thank you to our teachers who are committed to this work every Friday where these kiddos are developing new skills. So it's really important to us that our families are informed with what step our students are in in the Genius Hour practice. So in our newsletters, we share out a video that is made for our students at the start of each category for Genius Hour. So for like, say, wonder, there would have been a video for wonder, and there would have been learning targets and objectives describing the work that they're doing. And then at the end of the video, there is a home connection where suggestions are made for parents to continue the conversation with their kiddos at home and also just different ways they can partner with the work that we're doing. In the newsletter, we also provided a survey where parents can share out how different skills that they have, different interests they have, and what field they work in, so that later we can engage them with the work that our students are doing. So they can partner with them in the spring and really start building those passion projects and start working with them next spring. So we're really excited about that opportunity. So Kias, can you tell us a way that, another way that we collaborate with our community?
We collaborate with our community by involving Vandergrift High School, which is our local high school, in Genius Hour. Vandergrift High School involves its students in our Genius Hour by bringing students over to our school to help students with Genius Hour projects. Vandergrift helps students by giving valuable information about how they can improve their Genius Hour project. These students from Vandergrift High School are called accelerator students.
We are so grateful, thank you too. Thank you, we're not good at this mic thing, thank you. We want to say a big thank you to Mitzi Powell and Erin Mathis at Vandergrift High School for partnering with us and sending these kiddos over. It has been amazing to watch them in action. These accelerators have skills with Shark Tank ideas where they're creating these products, and so they're working with our kiddos on how to develop those skills as well. So we're really grateful, thank you to those wonderful ladies. So our students are going home, and they're feeling proud of their work, and they're engaging with their families on their journey. Sam, could you tell us a little bit more about how these conversations about Genius Hour make you feel at home?
So these conversations, when I continue them home, when I tell my parents, they were actually happy that I'm part of something in my life because at school, I am not popular at all. So it's nice just to be noticed in my everyday life.
Thank you for that, Sam, and I think you're wonderful. And Brayden, will you tell us a little bit more about this?
It helps my mom knowing what my knowledge is and the things we are doing, and it keeps her updated. It also lets us have bonding time while we laugh at me talking. Some more things is that it helps by knowing my talking ability. It also keeps her more committed to see the newest school projects.
Thank you Brayden for that, awesome.
So at this time, we're going to have some of our fifth grade students share a little bit more about the specific project they are doing right now in our Genius Hour. Vivian, how did your group identify a problem?
We figured out that our problem is the condition of our grass and sticker birds. We discovered this because on our first day of Genius Hour, our group decided that we would like to fix our fields and sticker bird problems. As we started researching, we became very aware of our grass's current condition. For example, we saw a picture of a little girl in our school who had an allergic reaction to sticker birds. This made us even more aware of our problem and helped us figure out how to fix it.
Sorry, I was looking at the slide order there. Looks like there's a couple missing slides, but that's okay. Thank you Vivian, you are amazing. Benton, can you add to that? What research did your group do?
So first, we got the information for the grass on some grass calculators and the Lowe's and Home Depot websites, and a lot of other ones. Then we put together a presentation on Canva, which isn't here right now. So then after that, we got some more info on the grass and switched from Bermuda grass to Zoysia grass because Zoysia grass worked better in Texas and Bermuda grass did not.
Thank you so much. And Angad, what work did you add to that?
We researched grass and created a presentation. We experimented the types of grass. The measurements were 100 feet by 150 feet. We found the area of the field. It was sixty cents per square foot. Zoysia is very aggressive to cover the whole field, so the price would be around $6,000.
Thank you so much. Mary Ann, and what solution did we end up creating for our group right now?
During this process, we came up with which grass would be good for our fields. We researched which grass would be able to stand the Texas heat. We looked into turf for a bit and found out it would not be a good option for our fields. Mr. Evans and his crew came in to help us with creating these plans. He helped us plant our two grass options side by side in little patches for our field to find out which one is better. We are currently stuck between Zoysia and Bermuda grass for the fields. These were the solutions we came up with.
Thank you so much. And I know we have a few slides missing on this particular one, but it did show some district employees coming to work with our kiddos, as well as just some of the, hopefully before and after photos I will have to make the playground a better place.
Yeah. So Sam, what was it like to partner with Mr. Evans, our district senior executive director of operations?
It was nice to partner with Mr. Evans because he pointed us in the right direction, so we weren't just like out in the fields throwing seeds everywhere.
So true, so true. And how did it make you feel when he came out here to work with y'all?
It made me feel like I could actually do something.
That's right. All right. So I think we do have the next slide for this. Let's see if it's still there. Oh, we don't, but that's all right. I'll just go ahead and explain it. So our next steps for Genius Hour is going through that final step of the process, which is presenting. And so every single one of our classrooms, as well as this fifth grade group, is going to be able to present their final product or idea to a panel of parents. And so it's kind of like a Shark Tank idea, and our kiddos are really excited to share, and our parents are really excited to listen. And again, we're going to extend this process by hopefully getting some parents to come in and volunteer and continue this work. This semester, our kiddos were focused in on a school improvement topic. So all of our classrooms were experiencing it on a schedule, going through each category. But next semester, our students are going to take on their own passion projects as they've already now developed these skills to where they are going to hopefully develop the school of not only being problem, like finding a solution for a problem, but also being problem finders. We want them really taking a look at the world around them and being creative with how to make it better. And I think that they're doing a really good job with all of this, so I'm really proud of you guys. All right, so thank you all for allowing us this opportunity to share how we empower our students and families and how we...
Think big, dream big, believe big, and achieve big through Genius Hour.
Thank you all for being here, and I also want to thank all the moms and dads, and I think some grandma and grandpas out there too. Thank y'all for joining. All right, next we're going to move on over to watch a video highlighting Leander ISD students and staff.
Welcome back. Can you believe it's already December? We only have a few weeks left of 2024. My name is Kalina, a senior at Leander High School.
And I'm Kayden, a junior also at Leander High School. 2024 was a year to remember. Let's jump right in and celebrate some amazing people across our district. Drum roll, please. All roads lead to state, that's right. All six of our traditional high schools marching bands qualify for the 2024 UIL State Marching Band Contest. That means that whichever feeder pattern a student is a part of in Leander ISD, they're interested in a band, there's a proven path to performing at the highest level.
What's at stake? The accolades rolled in as five of those schools reached the finals. At 5A, it was a one LISD sweep of the podium, with the mighty Leander Lions placing third, Rouse second, and Cedar Park taking the top spot for the sixth consecutive time. Over at 6A, Vista Ridge claimed fourth spot, while Vandergrift was awarded second place for their performance. We're not done yet. At the Bands of America Grand Nationals, Cedar Park and Leander both reached the finals, with the Timberwolves placing fifth and our Lions finishing in 12th place. Congratulations on an amazing marching band season. Every single program is simply amazing, and we look forward to watching your continued success. From marching on the field to digging on the court, one Leander ISD school spiked their way to the podium at the 2024 UIL Volleyball State Championship.
The Cedar Park Timberwolves have brought home the silver in the 5A division. Way to conquer your bracket. The season might be over, but they're ready to take their game to the next level. Head coach Lori McLaughlin went on to say in quote, "We are already locked in and eager to grow our game so we can have the opportunity to have an amazing season in 2025. We can't wait to see what you have in store for us next season. Congratulations on an amazing year." From the hardwood to a day at the races, we're not done bragging about the accomplishments our school have had at the state level.
Multiple LASC schools competed at this year's UIL State Championship across country. Vandergrift Boys took the podium, this time in the second-place team finish, led by Kai Kula, who earned sixth place for his individual time. Congratulations to the Vipers. You make so many people across the district proud of your hard work. We'll never get tired of celebrating our students for performing at the highest level. But as a student, that's only possible when we feel safe at our campuses.
That's thanks to the amazing school resource officers who protect us every single day. We want to thank you for all you do, and we're not the only ones who think so. Take it away, guys.
I just want to give a shout out to all of our SROs for SRO Appreciation Week.
I just wanted to say thank y'all for keeping the school safe and making sure that we can have fun and also just a good time at school.
Whenever I show up to school every day, I feel at mine knowing that there's someone out there that's protecting us, making sure that we're safe, and overall, just making it school a place I want to be.
It really is thanks to y'all that we can be at school without having worries.
Officer Hester is amazing with our students. They all feel very comfortable talking to him, and he is a very visible source on our campus, always eager to help and jump in and help the admin team. Thank you, SROs.
Thank you for all you do to keep us safe and all the things that you do to make connections with students at our school.
Thank you, SROs.
Wow, we have so many amazing people across our district.
Thank you to all the faculty, staff, and administration for putting our education first. Thanks to you, we continue to thrive as one community.
One family.
One LISD.
That's wonderful. Thank y'all for putting that together. It's really fun to share all those accomplishments. Next, we're going to move to our citizen comments portion of the agenda. Do you know if we had anyone sign in tonight? Yes, okay. Before I invite the first speaker to the podium, we're going to watch a short introductory video.
Hello, my name is Eileen. I'm a senior at Leander High School. The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here in Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the citizens comment agenda item. This is dedicated time during the meeting to hear from the whole community, and the entire LISD family is listening. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read the guidelines specified in Board Operating Procedures and BED Local. The Board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and example you are choosing to set while presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in board meetings, either by watching them online, or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the tone.
Speaker number one, you can go to the podium.
I want to say thank you to the district for conducting the listening sessions and for making legislative priorities to advocate for students in this district. I'm a special programs parent in LISD and have served on various committees, including currently serving as the advocacy chair for the Special Programs Parent Advisory Council. So many of the other engaged parents in this district whom I've met along the way are also parenting children with disabilities. It's become clear to me that special program parents want this district to succeed because the success of our children is deeply tied to the success of public education in this district. I was also not surprised to see special education as one of the top targets identified by the listening sessions. Even the other identified priority issues are things that I've heard from other parents that are impacting special education in unique ways. Parents of special education students are nervous and unsure about how proposed state and federal policy changes are going to impact their children. So as a parent, I'm here to ask you to prioritize special education issues, including funding for special education, replacing the attendance funding model which can negatively impact special education students and parents, and ensuring children with disabilities are supported and not punished for behavioral manifestations of their disabilities. I'm also asking for the district to deepen partnerships with special programs parents to better understand how broader issues identified, including curriculum flexibility, building effective partnerships, and school safety and mental health support are impacting children in special programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number one. That concludes our citizen comments for this evening and moves us on to our next item. That's going to be item five on our agenda, and that's consent. Board members, do you have any motions related to the consent agenda items?
I move the consent agenda items be approved as presented.
I second.
Anna makes motion, Francesca seconds, all those in favor? Five in favor, consent agenda passes. Next item is our superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll jump right in here. Incredible performance so far this season by the Vandergrift High School Vipers, beating Harlan this last time 47 to 14. So that takes them on now to Saturday's state semifinal game. They'll be played at Baylor University at McLean Stadium, just for Daniel. And Saturday at 7:00 PM. So we hope that lots of folks will turn out to support our Vandergrift Vipers. Switching gears entirely, superintendent report, not superintendent report, this is the superintendent report, superintendent evaluation. We had some discussion about the tool itself, and there were some changes that we wanted to make to some of the KPIs based on the feedback that we got. And so we just wanted to share what those look like right now, and then we can have more conversation as we go into the next formative evaluation, if that's necessary. But just wanted to point out that this is System Response 1.1, create and support a culture of deeper learning for all staff and students, so they achieve the attributes of the graduate profile. On the left is what the KPI stated before, and then on the right side is what we're proposing to change that KPI to. So we just wanted to get that in front of you. And we'll have lots of time to have conversation about this as we go forward, so I just wanted to give you time to look at that as well. And then 2.3, we talked about this one too, and so we've adjusted the language on that KPI as well. All right, so we'll bring you that as we go on. Lots of festive things happening at this holiday time. It's particularly impressive when you see a school bus transformed into the Polar Express, and so lots of fun with our Transportation Department. They certainly have a lot of energy. There is a person in here. You can barely see her on the left, and you can just see her feet on the right, so we're not pointing anybody out in particular, but even at Central Office, there is some fun things going on at this time. I have to point out SCR because they always kill their Christmas picture. It's just quite something. And then I do want to point out these two ladies, Ashley and Sandra, because sometimes we don't recognize the face of the district, and these two really are the face of the district. Often, they are the first voice or the first face that anybody who's interacting with Leander ISD gets to see, and they just do such an incredible job. They bring so much joy to their work every day, and I just don't think we say thank you enough, and so we just want to give a big shout out to Ashley and Sandra. And then socks and smores, I guess. Not quite sure. All right, we do have a quick update on safe and innovative learning environments. This is right away, and we do have some drone footage. The drone footage ran all the way up right away and then turned around and came all the way back, and we're just gonna play you the first half of that so that you can see some of the progress that's going on right away. So as you can see, this was taken right as school was getting in, and because of the amazing two principals we have over there, Vince and Darla, they made it just look, no, I'm just kidding, Anna, it's really fine. It's really fine. But we do have two amazing principals over there who have had two full-time jobs this whole year, managing their schools and then managing Right Away in Woodview as well. And so impactful family engagement, this drone footage was provided to us by one of our parents who just is very gracious in allowing us to share that with you. So we do want to give a big shout out to our school families and all of the folks at both Wiley Middle School and Rouse High School for being patient with us as we navigate through what's been a fairly interesting process in Right Away. All right, and so this may be SCR shout out night. I don't know what's happening here, but we had this just incredible groundbreaking for our eighteen-plus transition services and Science Materials Center building. A huge thank you again to our community who approved the bonds that are allowing us to construct this facility. This is a long time coming, and just what an incredible groundbreaking ceremony, just really, really amazing to hear from Denise Geiger, to hear from the folks at the Science Materials Center, Brenda, and others just about the conditions that they're working in now and how incredibly grateful they are for this new facility that's coming to the district. And so what people don't realize though is that sometimes there's a lot of adult learning that goes on behind the scenes with these things. And so here you see this incredible picture of SCR at the groundbreaking with the sign and the flag and the dirt and the... I used to have a sand pile like that at home when I was a kid growing up. That's another story. So this is how we got the photo. This is my reaction apparently when he handed me the camera and said, "Here, you take the photo." And so then we had to do a little learning because it didn't quite come out right the first time. So then Daniel's like, you know, you just do this, and you push here, and you point here, and you do that. And so we got a little closer, a little better, and we're getting some further instruction about how to frame the picture. And you see the joy of learning when you get a new skill, and you go like, wow, I actually took a picture. That was pretty cool. Lots of fun and laughter, which is what it's all about and what our culture is here in Leander ISD, and that's how we get pictures like this. We want to give a big shout out and thank you to Concordia University for hosting our board meetings for the last, I think, eighteen months or so. They've gone out of their way to really provide us everything that we need to make this space accessible. We've been happy to be down in the southern portion of the district to be in connection with that part of our community. And so just a huge thank you to Concordia for hosting us and for being gracious and patient with us as we navigate through this process. So having said that, this is our last meeting at Concordia University. And starting in January, on January ninth, we will be moving our board meetings back to Cedar Park, at Cedar Park Middle School specifically, in the library. And so we look forward to hosting in a different part of the district, and we'll be in Cedar Park Middle School for the foreseeable future, pending any other decisions that might come later on. So January ninth, we'll see you at board meetings in Cedar Park. All right, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Nope. All right, well, we're gonna go ahead and move on through our agenda. We had moved this with our legislative update first, and I think, are we okay to just stick with that and move forward?
So Colby is not here, but I'm happy for us to go ahead and walk through this, and if he gets here and has some comments, we can just plug him back in. Is that okay?
I think so, yeah.
And we heard he'll be here by seven.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and start that, and we can move on over to 7B1 then, which is our Legislative Committee update.
So in the absence of our committee chair, Trish, I'll just make a few remarks. The Legislative Committee meets regularly, and we meet with Colby, who's our legislative liaison, and really helps walk us through all the things that are happening at the Capitol to make sure that we're up to speed with, for example, all the bills that have been filed since the first filing date and getting ready and in preparation for the work that's gonna happen. Anna is on that committee. She's been involved in some good work with special education, and so we want to give her an opportunity to give us an update on an event that she organized and hosted at the Capitol last week.
There I am. So just some backstory. About a year and a half ago, I just started talking with other trustees, you know, in the area who are parents with kids with disabilities in Texas Public Schools. And Round Rock ISD has a trustee and so does Flugerville, and we just started coming together and talking, what can we do to try to get our voices heard? And I think y'all remember, we did a press conference last year, and that's kind of where those groundwork started laying of working together. And so TCase, which is the Texas Council of Administrators of Special Education, did I get that right? Yes, okay. Andrea Chavallier is their policy director and had reached out to me at the beginning of this year to see, you know, what are we doing different in Leander ISD? What is it? What is that parent voice? She hears about it a lot, because she's also a parent in our district. And so I got to get on my soapbox, which y'all know I enjoy doing, talked about the COPIA report, talked about this, and just talked about that process and what it looked like. And so she goes, hey, would, you know, Leander ISD be interested in partnering? And so y'all know me, anytime I can talk about specialization, I took my opportunity. And so what we have here is we started getting together in September with our local lawmakers, Representative Bucy and Goodwin, and just trying to understand, what do y'all want to hear from school districts? Because I know I can go up there as a parent, and I will do it. I will let them know every negative thing that they've passed and done, but that's not what they want to hear. They want to know that story. And so here we had an opportunity to not only go in there and tell them, hey, every unfunded mandate that you pass really hurts us, but let me tell you your unfunded mandates, let me tell you the powerful things we're doing here. And so what we did is we had this Special Education 101 presentation at the Capitol, December 4th. Traffic was horrible. It took me two hours to get there, but hey, we did it. And there was over forty staffers there, y'all. And to have bipartisan support from the House and the Senate to be there and to ask questions, not just so much like, you know, in the form of, okay, well, how much money you need? I got to talk about the parent empowerment that we do here. I got to talk about our CPAC group, and we heard about it in Citizens Comments tonight, about how we have the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee that did come out of the COPIA report that was parent-led. And here we have this group that is trying to figure out real-life problem-solving to try to not only improve our district for the state. And so I really got to sit up there and tell them the amazing things we're doing in Leander, but I also got to let them know, hey, you know, we had over twelve hundred evaluations last year. That's $5.5 million in evaluations, and those aren't even, those are just your initial evaluations. And that sparked a conversation, and to be able to have like a frank conversation and have those numbers and tell a story, that's probably the best thing that we can do to try to get those at the state Capitol to understand what is really happening in our district. So we had individuals from Flugerville and Round Rock, we had TCase, we had University of Texas, two professors, I believe. One of them is working with one of our area superintendents. And then we also, a charter school was there as well. Friendswood ISD, it was great. It just made me realize like how fortunate our district is to really have that parent voice. So with that said, it went well. So we have another one planned, January 30th, for Finance 101. I've asked Dr. Pete Pape and Paige and Sarah and Bruce to attend because I can sit up there as a trustee all day, but they look at me as like a small, little elected official. What they really want to know is they want to hear those numbers and those stories. But most importantly, how are we empowering our parents? And so I'm excited. We have quite a few presentations. We were also, can I go ahead and say this other one? Because this one worked so well, and we're working really well with Flugerville and Round Rock, and other trustees know, when you start working with other trustees and districts, it's very much Alpha A personalities, and it can be really hard to contain. But this is working, and it's just really meshing really well together because at the end of the day, we know if we solve the special education funding crisis, we're going to really impact the rest of our budget. And so with this coming about, we decided that Leander ISD is gonna host a Safety and Security Summit, January 24th, and it's gonna be with staffers. And it's grown quite a bit, but it'll be great with other districts. But most importantly, y'all, it is really just a time for us to tell our story and just to really get out there and the great stuff we're doing in Leander. And I'm just really fortunate that our district is doing great stuff. We have improvement, but we're doing great stuff.
Thank you, Anna. I asked her if she would share that experience because I thought a lot of times when you go and you speak with legislative reps there, and, you know, you're going with your priorities, and those pieces are really important, but also the stories are important, right? Just that storytelling. Let me tell you how this mandate, how this piece of legislation, how it impacted my child. And then for trustees to be able to add a layer of that, this is the story of my child, this is the impact, let me tell you about our school district, let me tell you these stories of impact. So just really think that was amazing and just really powerful. You had a lot of bipartisan, you know, staffers there, and that's important as we're moving, trying to move things along to support our students better. So thank you, Anna, for being there.
I'll always talk about special education. Colby?
Sorry, can I ask Anna a question? So can you talk a little bit about the importance? You connect with legislators themselves, so you talk to Representative Bucy and Representative Goodwin, but in this case, you had forty-two staffers at the table. Can you talk a little bit about the importance of why staffers, and what does that mean, and who are those folks?
I mean, let's be honest, I love our representatives, but we know who does the real work, right? Like, I can go to Representative Bucy, and I can do this because he's a friend. I'll ask him about a bill and be like, go talk to Ashika. They're the ones who are doing the research. They're the ones who are, you know, really out there. They're the advocate for their representative, right? And so they're the ones that I need to have that one-on-one time with. I can go sell my story up. By the time your representatives get to there, they've already got an idea of what they're gonna vote for. Unless you really have a compelling story, I mean, let's be honest, y'all. We need to get to these staffers now so that when they're starting to talk about these bills, like for instance, when I was in there, they started, oh gosh, they started talking, I'm not gonna be rude. They're just talking about a lot of unfunded mandates. Well, why don't the districts do this? And why don't the districts do this? And I was like, hey, we do this already. Like, this is what we're doing. I don't need you to do this. What I need you to do is help me, I don't know, pay for evaluations. And just to be able to kind of really, like you said, tell our story, that is the most powerful thing. Because I can sit up there and yell at them, I need funding, I need this, and all in their mind is like, I already gave you enough funding. I don't know how that's helping you, but when you tie a student, when you tie a parent, when you tie a story to it, and they can see it, it just changes the game. It really changes the whole conversation. So, I mean, I'm hopeful, and that says a lot for me, but special education's a bipartisan issue, and we all know that. And if we're gonna really make some headway, this is the way we're gonna do it, is through special education this session.
Yeah, so just to recap then, so on the 24th, at the Capitol, we'll be hosting staffers about safety and security and mental health, because those three things are tied together. And then on the 30th, you said you're having another special education summit specifically about finance then?
It's special education, finance, and then also again in April, I will be doing another staffing on parent empowerment through special education. And so I'm really hoping to use our CPAC, because I mean, what better way telling our story from where we started? Granted, I know we're not, I know we're not perfect, but man, we're doing some pretty good stuff here compared to other people, and I will say that.
So thank you for your advice.
Hi, Colby, how are you?
I'm doing well.
We just pulled you right in here.
Yeah, I thought Pete was messing with me that y'all had already started. Just having me come up here.
I was like, no, for real. So we already went through kind of some of the legislative update pieces with our committee. So the committee is Anna, Trish, myself, and we meet with Colby and Bruce and some other fabulous staff that's gonna come up. But if you want to give like an executive summary of some of those committee updates?
Yeah, sure. So number one, I know Trish isn't here tonight, but she always asks that I hit on the State Board of Education and the most recent happenings there. One thing I wanted to mention to you all is theoretically, in November, they approved their distribution from the permanent school fund to the available school fund. Why that's important is because fifty percent of that amount is supposed to go to instructional materials and technology. The other fifty percent goes to per capita funding. So a lot to say, $3.6 billion of the biennium is what they ultimately approved to be distributed. Now, all that being said, it's still subject to appropriation, right? But if that number holds, for instructional materials, for instance, that would be $1.8 billion for the biennium. It would be a record, more money than we've ever had before. Now, last session, it was probably in the range of, I believe it was one and a half billion, and ultimately, you only saw 1.09 of that. We did have some legislation in 1605 that passed last session that mandates that the base budget bill has to- has to show that actual 50% number. So, that's going to be interesting as we move forward to see, you know, does that number change? Does it stay constant? So, that's the big piece there. Obviously, you know, all eyes are on politics right now. You've got a speaker's race. That's something I've never seen before. And there's really two candidates at this point. There's Dustin Burrows out of Lubbock and David Cook out of Mansfield. So, you know, it's all over the map. It takes 76 votes to be speaker. I've had a lot of folks asking the question, what happens if they can't get to 76? The way the rules are currently written, they have to get 76. So, January 14th is the first day of session. That's the day they'll decide who the speaker is. I could very well see us going all the way up until that day before we know who's going to be the speaker, which obviously is going to have impact on who's going to be Chair of Public Education, for instance, and who's going to be on the staff for the speaker that does the education policy, going back to staffers, and those sorts of things. That's a lot. Typically, you have a speaker in place, at least, you know, informally, in December, January, and they have the, or before January, and they have the opportunity to form that staff and do that. That may not happen here. So, it's going to be fun times, interesting times. But that's where everyone's heads at right now. But there are lots of discussions on policy. I think you're going to see the interim reports come out here pretty quickly and have the opportunity to kind of absorb those and understand where the committees have been spending most of their time. I think most of you probably know in terms of, you know, what the hearings they've had, and it's just basically going to sum those up, so.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. If there's no other questions, then I'd like to move us into the listening circles before we talk about our legislative priorities, so. Yeah. Basically, you might just want to hang out, Koby.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees. Dr. Gearing here to talk to you a little bit about legislative listening circles. I guess I didn't think through the button placement here. Is there a way to get that over to me? Is that possible? There we go. Awesome. All right. So, the purpose of this evening is to talk to you about the recommendations that we'd like to bring to the Board of Trustees for consideration in establishing the legislative priorities for the 89th legislative session. That's what we're doing here tonight. But I want to start first by talking to you a little bit about the system alignment that we have designed, intentionality around alignment between our community-based accountability system, our five-year strategic plan, and our one-year district improvement plan. You guys have seen this slide and heard about this, but the reason I'm talking about it a little bit tonight is because this system alignment drives everything that we do, and it really is rooted and grounded from our community on up. And so, you'll notice today as we go through this that there is intentionality on the legislative listening sessions following the same design and the same alignment. By the end of the presentation, you'll see how we took not only the voices of the community, the teaching staff, our students even, but we also created an alignment to our strategic plan goals for our priorities that we'll recommend this evening. So, that is what we will be talking about. We'll be talking about how we took those listening circles and how it's going to help support you all in your legislative advocacy for the 89th session. So, why listening circles? I want to provide a little context. I know some of you have a general awareness, but I want to speak to those who might not, and then also the community as well. So, we know that Leander ISD is committed to fostering trust and collaboration with its community. We know that you, as Leander ISD Board of Trustees, wants to make sure that we are supporting our public schools and maintaining a strong presence and advocating for public education at the Capitol. So, with that, the listening circles were created to support both of those things for you both. So, through this, what we did was we asked stakeholders across our Leander ISD community to share their perspectives on the legislative priorities. The feedback was analyzed, and I'm going to talk about how we went through that, to make sure that as we were adopting priorities and making these recommendations this evening, that it was in complete alignment with what our community said. Feel very, very confident that we were able to accomplish that through the work that we did here. So, what is a listening circle? So, a listening circle is a small group of participants, anywhere between six and 10 is an ideal group size, together in a room, which is led by a facilitator and accompanied with a note taker. Hardest thing to do as a facilitator is not talk. You ask questions. You open the forum and allow for conversations and vulnerability. As a facilitator, you just kind of have to listen and go with the flow on that. It's really hard to do. You'd be surprised. And note taker scripts. One thing that we talk about at the beginning of a circle is we'll never talk, we'll never write your name. We'll never say so-and-so said this. We create a sense of safety before we start that listening circle. So, we make sure that that note taker is there just to write what they're hearing. No interpretations. And then, the questions that we designed were designed to solicit stories from our families. So, it was not as much of, what do you want us out there advocating for? It was really, talk to us about your lived experience in public education. And then, we took some of that information and analyzed it from there. So, our questions were designed to get some information on resources, on safety, staffing, and general well-being in school. So, the scope of this project. So, what we decided to do as we started this was interject ourselves and do listening circles within already existing meeting structures. So, instead of having a big giant forum and having people come out, knowing that we're already asking a lot of our community, we pushed into already existing forums. So, that was our D-WIC Council, Leadership LISD, Special Education Advisory Groups. We went to two different groups there. I've got to say, probably one of my top favorite was our SASSAC, our Student Advisory Council, and many, many others. And as we were seeing this to be a really, really successful structure, we started to layer in teacher and staff listening circles. We did both in-person and virtual for those, and those were highly, highly successful. We wanted to make sure we were being diligent about capturing a greater grasp for those who might not already be in some of those existing groups. And so, we sent out a thought exchange, and we had great engagement there as well. And so, those were all the different variety of ways. I will tell you, what we ended up doing was 31 circles across the district. And you have to remember, we have anywhere between six and 10 participants per circle. So, we were able to capture 221 participants total. The feedback that we were getting was very, very, very rich in those circles, especially as compared to the survey. And I'll talk a little bit about that here soon. The survey, we had about 60 participants, but there were over 300 engagements in that survey. So, that's anywhere between just answering a question, yes or no, or Likert scale, to offering a thought and then writing that thought. So, great, great engagement. That is a picture of one of the very first circles we did. And that's a lot of what they look like across the district. Very, very small, intimate. You can see everybody very well-engaged. Very, very awesome experience. I have to shout people out. I really felt strongly about making sure we had names in this. This is every single staff member who stepped up as either a facilitator or a note taker. We had over 30 district and campus-level staff that supported. Assistant principals. We even had teachers stepping in to volunteer. Cabinet staff, central office. The troops came out. Administrative assistants. And our partnership with SCR. Thank you so much for all your work. Really, really cool stuff. And this is who we captured in our feedback. So, students, staff, parents, community members, and community leaders. We were able to get a wide range of feedback across those stakeholder groups. All right. So, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about this chart, and this is where we're going to lead into our priorities that we want to recommend tonight. So, I want to start by talking really high level about the process we engaged in. I just talked to you about the listening experience. So, we went out, we listened. And then, we gathered trends. And then, we coded the trends. And then, we charted and prioritized. So, I want to talk a little bit real quick about the difference between a trend and a code, just to help people understand as they're listening online. So, the trends are patterns that we were hearing repeat across multiple groups, right? So, if I'm hearing a lot about special education in this group, and then I hear it in this group, and I hear it in this group, that becomes a trend. Those are statements that are very, that get clumped together in a group to make a trend. A code is simply just a label that you might put on a statement, all right? So, I'm going to give a very like simplistic example of this just to kind of make sure we're distinguishing. So, if I say, I'm feeling overwhelmed, that could be a code, right? I just said, I'm feeling overwhelmed, the code is overwhelmed. That's just a label. It's all it is. But if I've listened to several different groups and I hear, I have a lot going on. And then, I hear another group say, this is too much. And I have another group that says, I need more time. Then, my trend might be that there are high levels of stress in a high-pressure situation. That would be a trend, right? And so, I'm giving you that distinguishing factor because it helps us decipher and helps you understand how we got to where we did on those priorities, okay? So, what you're going to see on this chart is the trends to the left. So, on the very top, you see that we were hearing a lot of trends about voucher opposition. A lot of comments about privatization of schools and favoring public schools, and how do we make sure that we are getting the correct funding to support our public schools? All the way down to mental health, state funding, special education, school safety, salaries, and curriculum. These were things that we were hearing across multiple different groups. So, then, the process of coding is labeling those statements that correlate with those trends, and those are the numbers you see. So, let's go back up to vouchers for a second. That 20 means that there were at minimum 20 statements that were made that were in alignment with the voucher trend. Does that make sense? Okay. You go all the way down to curriculum, core, and non-core, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that and clarify that when we get down to the actual priority. This was mentioned at minimum 81 times across different listening circle groups. This one ranged a lot. This one came all the way from flexibility in curriculum to fine arts and access to be able to make choices in those types of things. So, that was a wide range. All right.
Can I just interject one thought very quickly? So, just want you to understand that she's made that sound very simple. But this is like dissertation-level qualitative analysis that takes hours and hours and hours and hours and hours. And she's simplified that down, but she did incredible work to get to this level of specificity, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. And then, also, I want to make sure that we are including the local implications here. So, we heard more than just the trends I showed you on that chart. What is important to note here is that the trends on that chart are trends that can support the school board and the district in what do we need to advocate for when it comes to the 89th legislative session. But there are other things that were repeated across groups that have local implications to our district. So, this is information that we're sharing with cabinet, and we're going to share with applicable staff to make sure that we're supporting and we're responding to what our community said. We want to make sure the community knows, we heard you, and we're going to respond. So, these are our local implications. So, it's ranged from family-school partnership. This could be report cards. This could be newsletters. This could be all types of things like that. Supporting educational access for all students. Our extracurriculars, boy, did that come out strong, right? And so, there were portions of that that we will talk about in our priorities, but there are also portions that we can address locally. And then, of course, supporting our advanced learners. So, these are things that we heard as trends that we want to make sure we're responding to as well.
Angela, can I just tag along on that? So, one of the things your committee did is obviously with those local implications, you know, it was sort of a translation of what does that mean on a policy level? What are we asking for or advocating for for the statewide folks, right? So, you know, it could have been something as easy as, I think we even saw this, you know, we need more time for fine arts, or we need, you know, more opportunities for band, or whatever it may be, right? And your committee did a good job of taking that, distilling it down, and figuring out, okay, well, essentially, what they're talking about is flexibility, right? They're asking for more flexibility in their core selections, their electives, and the ability to carve their own path, so to speak. And so, that's kind of how we helped to shape these priorities. And again, kudos to your committee and to Dr. Gearing and staff for being able to translate that. But that's essentially what we're talking about.
That's a great clarification. Thank you. Okay. So, with all of that background work that I just kind of described to you, here is where we are. So, Leander ISD provided feedback opportunities for the legislative committee through 31 in-person legislative listening circles, and then also those online. So, all this feedback has been incorporated into priorities that I'm going to talk to you about here. And again, they're going to be aligned to our strategic plan. One of the things at the committee that we were discussing is the importance of making sure that we have a belief statement that really elevates the heart of what we believe in. And so, this belief statement is kind of a preamble to those legislative listening circle, or, I'm sorry, the legislative priorities. And basically states that we believe that students should be empowered to own their own learning, that staff should feel empowered and valued, and strong partnerships with our families, communities, taxpayer, and the state are essential to building an educative workforce while acknowledging that local communities know their students best. By partnering with legislators and key decision-makers on the following priorities, we strive to create a safe and innovative learning environment that fosters a sense of belonging and supports every student's learning journey with equitable access and high-quality experiences. This commitment strengthens the public education system, ensures accountability, develops the skills necessary for lifelong success, and contributes to economic prosperity through improved educational outcomes. So, this is the belief statement that's at the core of the priorities that we'd like to propose here tonight. So, I'm going to quickly go through these priorities for you, and this is a great connection to what Koby was just describing to you. Our first one is tied to our goal one, empowered student learning. And so, this one is basically that we would like to maintain flexibility for curriculum to support student choice in their learning paths. We want to make sure that curriculum empowers students to explore their interest and craft personalized learning pathways personalized learning pathways along core requirements. So legislative priorities should support bills that preserve flexibility for students in pursue these pathways, fostering a balance between core subjects and individualized learning. So hopefully through that one statement, you can see the alignment to what we are about, what our vision is, and our strategic plan. We want to make sure that we heard a lot from the community about wanting to ensure that I have the ability to choose this pathway, let's say, band is something I have a passion for. I don't want required courses to get in the way of me being able to have that flexibility as a student, so we want to make sure that we're supporting that work. Another one that's tied to the student learning goal one is special education. I was listening to our speaker talk about funding and attendance funding and behavior and those types of things, and I was listening to Anna talk about her experience as well, and feel really confident that this priority is going to respond to that need. So with special education, we know that we want to make sure that we are addressing those persistent challenges that are hindering the success of some of our students with disabilities. We want to focus on increasing funding to ensure that students are receiving individualized support that they need to thrive academically and socially. So this is a...
And just, on that note, and we've talked about this several times, and I know Pete has brought this up many times, but that delta between what you're actually funded and what you actually spend in order to help keep those kiddos with the essential services they need, that is, that is a massive priority for all the districts, but especially here in LISD, y'all put a face and a number to it. So I think, you know, this is something, again, and I think we talked about it in our, in our committee meetings, that just makes sense and has plenty of backing behind it as we move forward.
Right, and that should support most of what we were, what we've heard from our community. All right, and so now we're in what our goal two is, empowered staff, and that's tied to our educator salaries and retention. So we know that this is critical to address the ongoing challenges that we've been having with retention, recruitment, and morale in education. While we've been making some progress with this, we want to make sure that we have the support from the legislative level to support fair and competitive pay, strengthen the education workforce, and ensure continuity and stability for our schools. We know that that's going to directly impact our students, so we want to make sure that we're supporting that as a priority. All right, and then our goal three, impactful family engagement. Here, we want to make sure that we're building effective partnerships. This kind of addresses some of our local concerns too, right? And so I think this is going to actually be a double whammy, I guess. So for each student's family, we know that it's critical that we're partnering for student success. So parents must have access to information about their child's education and be encouraged to participate in developing student ownership of learning. So increasing state funding for public education is necessary to ensure that parents can be offered that information and resources to drive their child's education. All right, and then our equitable access, very much tied to that goal three that we just talked about. So goal four, equitable access, funding from our state. We feel that state funding for public education is the cornerstone of equitable access for quality learning opportunities. Underfunding and unfunded mandates strain our schools, leading for resource shortages, larger class sizes, and staffing challenges that impact student outcomes. We want to prioritize and make sure that we're including the basic allotment, ensuring equitable resource allocation to address these district disparities. This came up quite a bit in the listening sessions as well, so we want to make sure we're addressing that. And then last but not least, we have voucher, nope, that's not last, we have one more after this, voucher opposition under our equitable access. So we were hearing a lot from people about making sure that we are preserving the ability to, for us to route our funding where it needs to be, which is in the public schools. So knowing that vouchers pose a significant threat to that, we want to make sure that we are, we are not perpetuating inequities and routing those funds to private institutions. We want to make sure that we're serving all students, especially those with special needs, right? We know that there's, there's a direct impact to our students with special needs should this move forward. There has to be a focus on reinvesting in public schools to ensure that students have access to their high-quality, inclusive education rather than pursuing policies that erode the public trust in resources. So we want to make sure that in order to ensure equitable access, we are pursuing this. And this one's important. If I jumped back to that chart, you would have seen that school safety and mental health were two separate categories, but as we really sat as a committee and analyzed the, what people were saying, we felt like these two could go together and be housed under our safe and learning, innovative learning environment. So we want to ensure that students and staff's safety and mental well-being is foundational to creating the effective learning environments that we know we want for our students. So we know that there's rising concerns for safety, increasing mental health challenges such as anxiety, depression, trauma, that our schools are required to get, to have some legislative support on this to address those critical issues. We would like for people to, or the legislation to discuss investment in comprehensive mental health resources and proactive safety protocols, behavioral interventions that will safeguard and empower our students to thrive academically. This came really, really strong from our students, our student groups. We heard this really strong from our student groups, so I think that's worth noting as well. So with that, those are the legislative priorities that we're presenting to you based on our community voice, and I will open it up for discussion.
First, I just want to reiterate, thank you, and thank you to all the staff that participated in bringing all of this data together. I think this is the most thoughtful collaboration I've seen of, you know, pulling together these legislative priorities, and really appreciate you in leading and really driving all of that work, so thank you for that.
Yes, thank you, I think it's amazing, like, we're giving our parents to have a seat at the table, right? And that's like one of the most powerful things you can do for a parent, to feel like you're empowered to try and to fix a really big problem. And I can say that from experience, so I just, I love the complete direction our district has taken, and it just makes me happy. But I do, I'm sorry, I didn't catch this earlier, but I have a recommendation on 21, slide 21. I love that equitable access, I don't want anything to change. The one thing I do want, though, is when it says, furthermore, vouchers perpetuate inequities as private institutions are not required to serve all students, including those with special needs, can we make sure that we say students with disabilities? Yes, they are special, but every kid is special. And when we start with conversations like this, right, we're essentially segregating these students to be special needs, and they're, where all of our kids are special. And I just want to make sure we're very clear on our language, it's students with disabilities.
We can take care of that.
So just to clarify, since we're going to approve this document, and so we need to make sure that at the amendment...
Says it, yes.
...that the motion portion, we amend that correctly, so are we taking, can you read the sentence to us as you'd like to see it, please?
Just to say, including those with disabilities. That's it. Yes, please. And that is the only spot on here, because when we talk about special education, we say success of students with disabilities. So we just need to make sure we're consistent with our language, but also just students with disabilities.
Perfect.
I have a question about slide 12. So the trends show what was talked about or what was raised more often than...
Yes.
Okay, and so when it comes to the highest score, the curriculum core and non-core, was it really just about, did any of the discussion about the SBOE instructional materials come up? I'm just wondering about the timing of that, of this discussion, whether it bled into that, and maybe that might have skewed this, or this was all just core versus non-core subjects and time?
That is a great clarification, and so I would say that that did not come up as much as you would think it would have. It really was a little bit more of, some of it was about curriculum to support critical thinking, basic math, personal finance, so it was some things that were leaning into that a little bit, but a lot of it was about, there was one in here about, that would have tied as well to equitable access, about making sure that we're being inclusive and equitable in what we're presenting in our curriculum. There were other ones that about, that were about just resources for schools, but a lot of what we heard was about school-sponsored clubs and things that were outside of core, outside of your four core subjects. So what are we doing to ensure that we have high-quality CTE programs? What are we doing to make sure that students have access to other fine arts or ag or those types of opportunities as well? You heard, that was a little bit more strong in the feedback than it was about core curriculum and SBOE.
You can see the full responses from the note taker. If you, it's under legislative listening circles materials, I would highly encourage, because those comments and those notes shared a lot of perspective of, you know, when our families are talking about this, or what students, you can tell, right, when it was a student and when it was parents, sometimes you could see that in there, and it, it gave you a lot of insight to legislative priorities, but other things that, that people were, you know, grappling with there too.
Yep.
Are there any other questions on those legislative priorities? If there is no other questions, I would need someone to make a motion, and I would need to make them to make a motion with the amendment for the change in language on... Yes, I'll write.
4B1.
Give me one second, and I'll write that out.
I move to approve Leander ISD's legislative priorities for the 89th legislative session as amended with section 4B1.
I second. Francesca makes a motion, Anna seconds. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, five in favor, motion passes. All right, we're going to take a short 10-minute break, so we will be back here at 7:38.[1060.01]
All right, we're back from break and we're gonna go ahead and get started with Agenda Item 7A1, which is our Impactful Family Engagement Formative Review.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Gearing. My name is Christina Hardy. I'm the Chief Communications Officer and I'm joined here this evening with Area Superintendent Angela Hodges and LEAF Executive Director Colleen Brighton. And we are presenting Goal 3, the Formative Review of Impactful Family Engagement. We're gonna tell you a little bit about this goal area and how the district's ongoing initiatives and accomplishments in fostering impactful family engagement. So, I'm gonna hang out on this slide for a little bit, sort of like Angela did, but not go into quite as much detail about system alignment because she did such a beautiful job, didn't she? Just how it all works together. Now, system alignment is one thing, right? We have system, but when you really see it come to life, or at least I did for me, when I started to think about system alignment beyond alignment, but how the goal areas come together and create something very unique. So, originally, when the strategic plan was first presented, I used to think about these goal areas as very singular things. So, join me if you will and use your imagination. I used to think that maybe empowered staff was a bag of flour, singular bag of flour. Equitable access was our butter. Safe and innovative learning environments as our sugar. And, of course, impactful family engagement as these wonderful bag of chocolate chips. All beautiful ingredients, right? They're great on their own and they could just sort of hang out by themselves and just be an ingredient and probably be the best ingredient they could be. But what happens when you actually put it all together? I think they make an excellent chocolate chip cookie known as empowered student learning. Yeah? Was that good? Okay.
It's only good if we get to eat them.
Okay. So, really, what really I wanted to illustrate to you is that this goal area and our work has really come to life and that's what our presentation is going to show you today. How impactful family engagement comes together with all the other goal areas in order to really, really help execute the strategic plan. I turned myself off. This next slide is... So, our goal is again to engage our diverse community by fostering positive relationships through that reciprocal communication with the impact being our students experiencing support for academic and socio-emotional success through strong school, family, and community partnerships. I think what you'll see throughout... Do you want the cookie?
It's like, are we gonna get the cookies before or after? No, I'm just messing with the...
You're totally gonna get them, yes! They're tinctured. But just to really, like, what I think that is, what's been beautiful to see over the past three years is really how we have built the systems to improve trust, mutual respect, shared responsibility. And that, to me, is really the cornerstone of what we've been able to accomplish with this particular goal area. I keep on hitting the wrong thing. So, without further ado, I'm gonna start off with how impactful family engagement supports empowered student learning. Go ahead, take it away, Angela.
Absolutely. And so, knowing that we're really talking about Goal 3 and how it supports all the other goals, we wanna start, of course, with our students first, empowered student learning. These are just a couple of examples of the things we're doing. And so, I wanna talk a little bit about how we're leveraging this goal to amplify what we're doing with student ownership and make sure that everybody understands and collectively, our community is involved in that as well. So, a couple of examples right now. So, MAP and ISIP, as you guys know, the assessment platforms we use for both math and reading can be complicated. A parent can get a report and they're not knowing what they're looking at. So, there's conversations we're having right now about how do we create online tutorials, videos, and things that walk people through how to decipher what they're getting from their teachers, right? Those reports. Science, as you guys know, in secondary science, we have NUTICS, which have implications on the inquiry-based learning and the collaboration that we're doing in the classrooms and we want parents to know about that. So, creating ways to, like, we've sent out Remind messages, it's been on the news site, the compass, we're gonna be creating a video so that people can see what that looks like and sounds like in classrooms. Again, amplifying that student ownership. Math pathways, we've had this conversation already before, but work that we're looking to do right now is a video to talk about that. We've talked a little bit here about town halls to make sure that parents know what's out there, what their options are for their children, those types of things. So, leveraging Goal 3 being the communication that we're supporting that student ownership. I don't know if y'all checked out Level Up, but if you haven't, it's really cool, you gotta check it out. So, we have one episode out right now that's featuring our one and only Dr. Gearing and really talking about real-world examples within our system that demonstrate what student ownership looks like and sounds like in our district so that we can make this tangible, not only for our teachers and our students, but our community, our parents, to know that this is something, we're moving in this right direction, it's right for kids. And then, of course, our spotlight. You guys got to see River Ridge this evening, very cool things, right? And so, we wanna make sure that we're exposing that and those spotlight videos is another way to be able to do that so we can see what our campuses are doing to align to student ownership. So, those are just a few examples of the way we're trying to leverage that voice.
All right, Goal 2 is empowered staff and with that, we have the empowerment fund. And LEAF is partnering with the district to launch this big idea and we have been receiving grant applications and we've just done our initial review. There are two committees. There's an internal committee and then there's also an external committee made up of community members who are reviewing these big ideas. And the idea around the empowerment fund is to give our staff opportunities to have the funds to launch their big ideas. And their big ideas are centered around student learning and student engagement. So, back to what Christina is saying, you can't talk about empowered staff without engaged students. And the other thing around empowered staff is, and I'll talk about this in the next slide, is engaging our staff, like, we just hosted two different State of the Districts and part of that conversation with Dr. Gearing was including our staff in the presentation with both the State of the Districts. And then, I'm gonna go to the next one. And then, Goal 3, that's us, the impactful family engagement. I loved the River Ridge presentation at the beginning, that had every point... Do we get any of this? So, I know, but it has all the components and the best chocolate chips. So, the River Ridge presentation had the family engagement, the student empowerment, and staff empowerment and I just, I loved seeing all of their presentation and the kids' excitement. And what I saw in that is, that is a big idea, that genius idea of engaging your students, helping them. They have a problem, but engaging them and finding the solution. And that's what we're looking at with the empowerment is how do we bring students into the conversation and learning? And so, the other couple of things that LEAF has been partnering with the district around the family engagement is the State of the Districts, if you had an opportunity to attend. We did one in the north with Leander Chamber and Cedar Park Chamber and we had a student exhibition. And so, we brought in a little bit of the school district into an hour and you could see different innovative programs. There was Braille, there was art, all kinds of fun things. And then, again, the presentation was centered around what the school district is doing, how we're working with the students and the staff, and then also the data and the growth of the school district. The other big area around family engagement that has been going on this last year is the work through CTE, the Career Technical Education. And a big part of that program that has grown is the practicum, which is the student internships that are happening in the senior year of class. And engaging with the business community is really important to growing that program. And so, we have been working with the CTE program to connect them with the business community, to build those partnerships so that we can expose students to internship opportunities and also engage businesses in the work that we're doing here at Leander ISD. And that is all I have on that slide.
All right, this is a fun one. So, we're looking at Goal 3 here and when we talked about preparing for tonight, we did wanna make sure that we were expressing how we support other goals, but there's areas within Goal 3 itself that kind of stand alone and that are really, really important, right? And so, culture voting is one of those things. I know that's familiar for you all. Really, at the end of the day, we want everybody's voice to be heard. We wanna elevate Leander ISD's voice and that's what this one is all about. Some of the work that we've done around this, besides the landing page that we have on the website, is the Legislative Listening Circles, which we already talked about, so I won't reiterate that. But that was a forum and a platform for people to express where they were coming from and allow their voices to have impact on what happens at the state level. Covering student accomplishments, this is something that SCR does really phenomenally and I might have spent more time than I should have just making a list of a couple of fun things by like, you know, hunting down Leander ISD's page. But just a few recent, very recent celebrations. Cedar Park Middle School or Cedar Park High School's volleyball, Silver at State. All of our dance companies across all high schools, Division 1 TDEA. I have a dancer, so woo-hoo, yeah. All middle school fine arts, one-act play. We had Running Brushy make second place, DMS first place. Band, Grand National Champ finalist for Leander High School, Cedar Park. That is just like barely scratching the surface of the accomplishments here in Leander. And we do a great job here in our district just elevating that for our student groups and celebrating that. So, also, here's one that you'll wanna keep your eyes on is we're switching our parent communication tool to enhance and streamline communication to families. And so, our contract is up with Remind and so, we'll be looking at other products that help support a better end-user experience for our families, right? And so, we're thinking about what customization might be necessary, how do we support stronger translation services to our families and then a reduction of that net noise and that notification. I know y'all hear that from time to time about the number of messages that come, so ensuring that families can customize their messages and not get flooded with those as well. Couple of examples of how we're addressing Goal 3 there. And then, here we have equitable access, our Goal 4. Really cool. So, a couple of things that we're doing with multilingual community. There's a lot here, but I'm gonna just elevate one of them. And it's the work that the dual-language departments partnering with a few of our campuses on EC through 12 SEAL of Bilinguality Pathways. So, what that is, it's a system to support our graduating high school students so that they can be acknowledged for their bilingualism and their bilinguism. And one of the coolest things about this, one of the campuses is a campus that I serve and support that's very, very excited about creating platforms for learner portfolios for all of the students on that campus. But that system is gonna support students who'd start to go into middle school and start to go into high school having this ambition. So, that it would start at the elementary, kindergarten, pre-K level of curating a learning portfolio so that when they get to high school, they're not having to chase those materials down. And it positions them really well to be able to earn their SEAL of Bilinguality. So, that is something we're currently working on and very, very excited about. There's a really strong communication and partnership happening with elementary, middle, and high within the Glenn Feater pattern to support that right now as we speak. And then, of course, On the Street Podcast, I think that was rolled out and introduced last year. I wanted to mention a few of the more recent ones that have been put on. We had Native American Heritage Month with Fran Harper. She's an IA from Comacho that was featured in that one. And we also had Hispanic Heritage Month with Martha Hinajoso, who we shouted out during the beginning here, who is our district receptionist. And so, those are just a couple of ways that we make sure that we're elevating the voices and ensuring equitable access across our district.
All right, and finally, supportive of our safe and innovative learning environments. I feel like this is an area that we've spent a lot of time just concentrating on, really amplifying the message around our bond projects. And so, just enhancing the visibility of our bond expenditures through the mailers and our bond webpage, keeping that consistent. I think that that has been a beautiful story that even internally, we are turning to that bond webpage to show the status and status of each of these projects, but also the safety and the security enhancements have been key for us to be able to show where we are in the status of each one of those projects. But also, just to keep us honest about where we are with each one of these projects and a placeholder, if you will, to see some of the success that we're seeing throughout. It has, the Bond 2023 has kept us busy in more ways than just the webpage. We have been doing ribbon cuttings for, we did the ribbon cutting for Heysel at the beginning of the year, but now we are doing a series of, I'm so sorry, we're doing ribbon cuttings for the series of baseball and softball fields, which is keeping us busy. And we'll be doing, we had one for Rouse and we'll have more for our high schools throughout the fall before the baseball and softball season begins. And then, of course, Bruce featuring our groundbreaking for 18-plus in the Science Materials Center. So, not just the fact that these things are happening, but also covering them to the extent in showing our partnerships with our contractors, our subcontractors, and showing how all of that comes together, our businesses and that business support that becomes a vital part of how this engagement all comes together. So, oh, and I do not wanna forget our Empowering Parents Safety and Security Series that we've hosted throughout the month of November and we had our final one earlier this week in which we were able to really showcase the layers of safety and security within our internally between support services, student support services, health, counseling, emergency services, and through the creation of our police department, how it is not solely singularly based on just that creation of the police department. It actually involves many different layers that helps ensure the safety and security of our students and our staff. So, I will say, just to bring it back to our baking analogy, if you will, I think that we could, we could literally concentrate on being, again, the best ingredient that we wanna be, but this doesn't happen on its own. And so, creating alignment is one thing, but it's the collaboration and the synergy around the leaders in the space that help make this a vibrant document, a living document in the strategic plan. And I'm very excited of what we've been able to accomplish in Year 3 and the things that we're looking forward to. But as we continue to do these things and create different initiatives, it requires a level of dedication to keep those things going. So, I will acknowledge that is probably one of the biggest areas and challenges for us is just keeping the momentum going as we are exploring different things and new initiatives.
Thank you. Thank you for your fun presentation, too. The cookies are most appreciated. I love seeing just the diversity and different ways that, you know, we're interacting with our community. I think for us, when we're looking at this formative evaluation and when we're doing the work in close sometimes, I want to... Sometimes I wanna have like data points that, you know, we need to have some of these data points. And so, I'm wondering if some of the information that can be included is, for example, on the podcast, like, how many listens? So, I know when I'm thinking of how we're engaging our community, how many people are listening to those podcasts in our community? When we talk about some of the, you know, the safety presentation we had, how many people were in attendance? Because that tells me, okay, you know, we're really trying to engage our community thinking through what are the numbers of people that are being impacted in these different ways so that I can have another measure.
Yeah, my comment, sorry, my comment is gonna be very similar to that, like, the reach for the podcasts and things like that. But also, I wanted to add, for the safety and security presentation or what just recently happened with the empowerment series, was that recorded and can go online as well? And so, you can add that because not everybody can show up in person?
Yes.
Because I planned to attend one, but I'm thinking about the last minute and I could... Yes, that is a great question. Thank you for asking that question. Yes, we did record that segment and what our plan was to do was to sort of have it available and then create a news article and be able to share it and publicize it so that folks will have something to go back to. Because I feel like we're in the process of creating the police department right now and I don't think interest will necessarily peak until we see that licensing go through. And so, then we'll have, for posterity, have that meeting available so that people can actually see the beauty of those presentations because our folks actually did a wonderful job of presenting the information, but the attendance was poor. And I think that trying to do this in the middle of fall when folks are busy and there are so many things that are happening, this was the best way for us to be able to have even further reach by having that video recording available. So, I anticipate within the next week or two and definitely prior to some future meetings around the status of the police department, we'll continue to push it out. And would that message get to everybody? Or is it just going to be shared in certain circles, like whether it's social media or just from the district? And then, people are expected to find them as opposed to going from the principals to the entire campus? Because sometimes people just read their principals more or read their teachers more and make it go that way. We can absolutely make that available to our campuses to get that posted within their own campus newsletters.
So, I had a question, or I guess a thought, whatever, discussion. When I see this, right, when I was going through the presentation, I'm like, yes, this is great, this is great. But this, to me, is not what we're really doing for impactful family engagement, right? When I look at our district, right, I'm thinking right off the bat, empowered learning. I think about Wiley Middle School and their mixing program. That program has a good chunk of parents who are showing up and who are getting into the school and that, to me, is what family, true family engagement is. Yes, we're telling a story. Yes, our learning spotlights are great. Yes, everything, you know, communication's great. But it's really what happens in that school, that that's what family engagement is. And so, like, for me, I'm like, where's our mixing program? What does that look like? We know we have our middle schools and we know our parent volunteers and what makes that program run. And then, I think about our Thanksgiving lunches we have and what that really has done to schools. But then, I take it a step further, right? You've got your math curriculum nights and those are packed. Parents are wanting to be engaged. Parents wanna have a seat at the table, they wanna be in the classroom. And then, to take it even a step further, you have your room parents. And let's be honest, that is your true family engagement right there. Because those parents are gonna be involved in their kid's school and they're gonna understand and they're gonna do whatever they can for their school. So, for me, like, I know what you were saying, it's a struggle, but it's really like, we're doing it. And for me, I wanna see that stuff. Like, Glenn High School had a Evening with the Arts, y'all. Over 300 parents attended. And it is the, like, I can't get over the fact what that felt like as a parent, but also to see our staff there, to see that community come out. So, for me, I wanna see more of that day-to-day stuff because that's what tells our story. That is what parents want. I'm sure, I mean, I love a lot watching my Learning and Actions and I love our podcasts, but I also know what it's like to be a parent and to wanna try to get into the school and to just to feel like I'm part of that school. That's what I wanna see. I don't know how you measure that, but we're doing it now, Christina. You know how to tell a great story, just, that's what... River Ridge Tonight was great, like, here we are, parent engagement. That's what I wanna see, that piece right there.
It sounds like maybe something I heard was keeping track of, or to some extent, reporting on the number of volunteers and volunteer hours or something. Is that a data point?
I mean, yes and no. I think it's just the expectation, right? Like, we want our principals and our campuses to have parents come in. And yes, we do know it is, sorry, I'm gonna say it's the word of the year, consistency, right? You've got some campuses that are like, come in, let's go, they're in the workroom. Like, I know I can go on a campus when I was not a board member, right? I felt comfortable. There's some campuses where it's very, very much like you can only come this time and this time. There are some campuses where it's very, very much like, you can only come this time and this time. And I understand that. There's other ways to engage. But like, what can we do to really empower principals and that community to one partner with their PTA or PTO? And that also comes back on us to really ensure that we're supporting those PTA and PTOs. Because let's be real, those are who are driving that parent engagement at that campus. I don't know how you measure that because I don't really think it's on us to decide PTA memberships or PTO memberships. But I do think it does allow our principals math curriculum night, Thanksgiving, you know, lunches, just clearing those hurdles and just try to really empower them to really, let's bring those parents in. Because, y'all, we're going to go through some crazy times of public education and we need to have our parents by our side, so.
I think what I'm hearing, it's all of this and that. And I don't know if that's like a deeper conversation of the board, right? I'm looking at Sarah as we're talking about our goals and Dr. Gearing and our formative review of maybe, maybe we want different metrics on there, right? You know, and that is on us to kind of outline. Because you made a really valid point. That is real family engagement, right? I mean, that's families engaged on that campus, going to these different events, volunteering with these events. That's impactful family engagement, more than them probably listening to a podcast, right? It's going to be, it's that and it, you know? I wouldn't say it, we want that level of deep thought in these items at the district level. But it's really going to be that campus-level engagement of how we are encouraging that, how we're collaborating with our campuses. And then I'm also thinking how we, as a board, are supporting that type of family engagement and thinking through what can we do to help our schools, you know, encourage that type of family engagement? So, thank you and thank you for your beautiful presentation. Does anyone have any questions? Any other questions? Okay, well, thank y'all. We are going to move on to our next item, which is 7C1, which is discussion of naming charter process for the special education 18-plus transition services and the Science Materials Center.
All right, back again. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Gearing, Christina Hardy, Chief Communications Officer. And I will be presenting today on, for a discussion of the process of naming special education 18-plus transition services in Science Materials Center. So the purpose of today's presentation is to outline a process and parameters for a charter to name the special education 18-plus transition services in Science Materials Center. And I really do hope it gets a new name because saying it is a real mouthful. So keep on doing that. I apologize. Okay, so this is what the ground looks like right now. This is the most recent picture of the site. The site actually is located south of the student support services building and west of Central Transportation and across the street from the existing Science Materials Center. And this facility was approved in the 2023 bond. And the program, the 18-plus program currently resides in Cedar Park High School Portables, right outside the building, and as well as rented space at the YMCA Twin Lakes Facility. And again, the idea of this facility is to co-house these two groups in order to complement the services that they can provide for one another. I think the one of the beautiful things about this is just this, again, the collaboration of the project and how it works together. The other beautiful thing about it is the layout of it. I'm going to go this way so you can see it again. But that covered canopy and then there will be outdoor trails very close to where we had the groundbreaking and how the facility is going to be connected to one another. And so as Bruce, Dr. Gearing had mentioned, we had our groundbreaking last Friday. It was a beautiful ceremony and really brought together our story of the power of the past and the force of the future. And to see these two groups come together and really show decades-long passion for what this building represents was really a beautiful thing. So as you know, naming it falls under board policy. And so just to go over what it includes, a new building shall be named for one of the following either historical or geographical sites, a deceased significant individual, a local, state, or national historical event or place, a significant state or national figure, or a person who has made a significant contribution to education in the district. The authority lies with the Board of Trustees. However, there has to be a nomination process that completely allows for the transparency of it. So we're going to go through a sample charter and take a look at some of the things that you might want to revise or include because of the complexity of the issue of having two different facilities and just some clarity around. I would appreciate your guidance on how to move forward through this. So this is just a sample charter. This was for Elementary School 30. And the details included what you wanted the committee membership to look like, what expected results would come out of the sample charter, and then guaranteeing that level of authority around it, again, rests with the board. So all of that would be outlined in the charter. However, when we look at what other things we should include, just assessing the charter itself and what you would really, what would make it, evaluating it, how you would make it effective, and pinpointing different aspects of the charter that may need to be updated. And then, of course, if you could propose some revisions, I think the areas in which I would appreciate some guidance around is suggesting changes to maybe enhance the naming process if necessary. Do you want two names for this facility or just one? If we do do two names, do you want to hyphenate two names? Do you want two different committees to be in place or just one committee to take one name? Just any guidance that you would want to provide would be appreciated.
Okay, hi. I'm gonna, I just have a question. I'm gonna be good. It's the committee membership, right? When we look at schools, we do it based on your school zone. That's correct, yes. This is a very population of students, young adults, I'm sorry, young adults, who have utilized 18-plus program. I'm just going to say it, like, how can we ensure that they're going to have, be able to be part of that committee and not the greater good of the committee? Because let's be honest, majority of our district is not going to utilize this service. Majority of the district. Yeah, how are we going to fit the committee? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Because to me, this is a special, I'm trying to be really PC here. This is a very special thing. And for someone who has been through the process and understand the individuals who helped shape this process, you don't know unless you've been through it as a parent or a student. So how are we going to do this committee to ensure that we're capturing that 18-plus young adult community?
I think that the way that we've hosted committees before is, are you talking about the formation of the committee?
Yes, because like, right here, we say committee membership. It's residents, including students of the Elementary School 30 attendance zone, right? It's always, that's always been our big thing is ensuring, if you're on this committee, you're part of that zone, right?
Right.
How do we ensure with this, this is different. This is no zone, right? Any student in Leander ISD qualifies for 18-plus as a young adult can attend this or they have attended. So how are we going to, like, what does that committee look like? So those voices who have utilized the program get to be part of it. Like, how are we going to do this?
Well, I think I think I would need some clarity over, are we looking at just one committee? And what does that membership look like and how big of a committee you would want? I think it, I think.
I think, and tell me if I'm wrong. So when it's the naming of an elementary school or middle school or high school, it's easy, it's more clean because it's, okay, the people that live in the boundaries for that school.
Right.
In a situation like the naming for, you know, this current building, I'm not going to say the whole thing again because we need to give it a name. What would be the pool of candidates to potentially serve on that committee?
I understand what you're saying. I was just envisioning past, present, and future students.
Of 18-plus?
Of 18-plus.
Awesome. That's what, that's exactly what I'm looking for right there. I mean, I'm trying to not be direct because I know what I want to say, but I'm not going to. So I'm going to trust the process.
Thank you.
I am.
So I think, I think we'd like to go away and have some conversation with some folks about what that might look like and bring some suggestions back about how we do that well. Because I don't want to say this is.
I might have turned you off, sorry.
Thank you. That's what a red flashing light means, I'm sorry.
That was an accident. I didn't mean to. I was leaning over. I apologize for that. I've never used that before, but my apologies.
I'm actually sad that you found out that it will do that.
No, I appreciate, that's what I'm looking for. I'm just curious, how is that committee going to be formed and where are we pulling? That's all I'm looking for. But then, like Gloria said earlier, I mean, we're going to have this conversation coming up with other buildings. And so that's, this is where I want to see how we're going to do this before I start asking all the other questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think as we're thinking through the charter, when we talk about the committee, having the language being broad enough, right? So that it, that we're writing it in a way that it works for school is easy. And I think we know what that looks like already. I don't know what the language looks like when it's a, you know, it's a potentially a district-wide building. And so having some parameters in that language of how we would form the committee when it's not as simple as, you know, this specific school.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. I think that what we've done, yes, you're right. So in the past, we would solicit parents who lived in that zone and whatnot. I feel like, yes, we can have some discussion about what that looks like in the end. But I, again, so are we looking at, are we looking at it as one facility? Because there are two different complexes. There's a Science Materials Center and then there's an 18-plus. Is this something?
I do think they're two different facilities. And they're, when we think about our naming and what a committee looks like, I think we would be pulling in different people to represent, you know? And so I do think it's important that they are two different facilities. And, I mean, they have different uses, there are different populations. And so I do think it's two different facilities and deserve two different unique names.
Okay.
But that's my opinion. Feel free, please.
No, I agree because, I mean, this 18-plus young adult, it's essentially a school. We want them, this is, this is a place to learn and a place to, you know, be a young adult. And the Science Material Building is, yes, it's needed, but it's not going to, like you said, it's a different place and it needs to have its own name.
Okay.
But my question is, or my thought is, Science Materials Center has always been called Science Materials Center. I know 18-plus has been called that too, but this is different. Now it's going to be housed in this one building. So the four, as far as the 18-plus center is concerned. So I was just wondering, do we still want to create a name for the Science Materials Center building? Or is it just going to be Science Materials Center? Is that something to?
I think that's a great question for a committee to determine.
Okay, so to be clear, we will create, we could potentially create two different committees with potentially two different names and they would require two different charters. Okay, and they will each have their own separate application process. Okay.
And then the stadiums that we've had, do they pull, do they pull from like naming Gupton or Bible or Monroe? Was it just that local area that named their stadiums? Or was it just, I mean, I know it's been a long time, so it might be something similar. I don't know, just because.
No, it's been, I went down this rabbit hole about probably six years ago because it was the first night that I was on the school board. It was a terrible naming fiasco. And after that, I took it upon myself to call employees of the district for like 20 years and started asking them. It's been very, very different. So, no, that isn't consistent. But, you know, it was, we're, you know, we're a district that's been here a while and we've had all this growth. And so there's just a lot of diversity in how that naming process has evolved. But I think that we've gotten to a good place. And so I think, I think you have a clear direction to move forward, right?
Yes, absolutely. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move over to item 7C2, which is discussion of the proposed 2025-26 Budget Development Calendar and Budget Preassumptions.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing. Tonight, we're here to start the budget for 25-26. I know we just finished the other one, but now we're, you know, we're either closing one or planning for the next one. So we've put together a kind of a presentation. As you recall, this is the second year of us doing this. This is the pre-assumption phase. Previously, we would kind of come to the board in January and say, here's our, here's the assumptions and really didn't have a lot of time to discuss. So tonight is an opportunity for us to kind of bring you what the administration is thinking, to kind of get your feedback on some of the assumptions we plan on bringing. And then we can put that information together as we come back in January and we actually approve the assumptions. All right, so one thing that we, that came up last year about this time, give or take, was kind of what was the theme of the budget? What was, what was kind of the guiding piece of the budget? And so we always want to tie to everything that we have. So our end result is always is our strategic plan, right? And so what we're always striving is to accomplish a strategic plan. And so it's just, I know we're all familiar with it, but you know, it's empowered student learning, empowered staff, impactful family engagement, equitable access, and safe and innovative learning environment. So all of our board presentations are all tied to those pieces. So as such, shouldn't our budget be tied to that? And so as we go forward this year, what we want to do is have this, even though it may have been unwritten in our, in the back of our mind as our leading, as our guiding document, we want to have this as a, as part of the end game is what we're actually shooting for as we develop this budget and go through this process. So this is our end. This is what we strive for. And then if we build a budget, we're going to reverse engineer. And so a lot of that will entail, you know, we know what we want to accomplish, right? We know, that's part, that's what the strategic plan entails. We know what we want to accomplish in our district and we think we do a very good job. Always room to improve, but we do a really good job. What we want to do throughout this budget process is say, how do we continue what we are accomplishing and what we're doing and continue to improve? But we may have to have some discussions about how do we do that in a different manner? Do we reinvent not what we do, but how we do it or how we get there? Do we look at or recalibrate? I mean, can we do things more efficiently? Can we look at things doing differently but still get what the end result? Or even improve upon that end result? So that's what we're shooting for in this process. So that's why I wanted to start with the strategic plan and kind of work backwards. And so when we begin this process, real quick, it's the budget timeline. A lot of assumptions in the budget timeline. This is a legislative session year. And I think two years ago, I sat here and I said, in my 21, 22 years, this is going to be the weirdest and strangest session. And now I'm going to say, in my 24 years, this is going to be the weirdest and strangest session, okay? I've just never been in the dynamics that we have right now and as difficult as that we have. We'll briefly talk about the economic outlook, legislative update, and then kind of talk about some pre-assumptions. We'll go through demographics very quickly, high level, some enrollment numbers. And we'll talk about the board priorities, the activity that Dr. Grisham had us go, we all went through in October. And then we'll compare how to, kind of our actual, how we finished 23, 24. And then definitely take your questions and answers and have any discussions that we have as we, the administration begins to build the assumptions that we bring to you in January. in January. So our budget overview, again, this is budget prep. We're in the first step of a, you know, multi-step process. But we begin the prep, and then January, we actually begin developing the budget. And then we continue this through February. March, we start getting recommendations. April will present the preliminary budget to the board. About that time, the end of that month, we do receive preliminary certified values. The near final in May, and then they'll have the board call the, the election, not the election, but call the date of the meeting that we will adopt the budget, and we shoot for the June meeting. This is a legislative session, so we may be going on assumptions a little bit later. You know, two years ago, nothing happened in the session, and then there were like four special sessions and nothing happened. Colby's not here, should have asked him earlier, but there's a good chance we may replicate that or something similar to that. The good news is typically by April or May, you generally have a feel of what the vibe is down at, at the, at the, at the Capitol. And so you kind of know where things lean to. I mean, nothing may have passed yet, but you at least know what's being discussed and, and what that entails. So this, again, nothing, nothing out of the norm on the, on this timeline, but just wanted to high-level walk you through it. For economic outlook, so one of the main things that we've had in the last few years is we've got some, been able to increase our interest earnings. We do expect the interest rates are expected to decline about 25 basis points in December, I think, next week. And then probably twice in the spring and summer. So probably three times by the end of the year will be about 75 basis points, which is about 0.75% decrease. So we're projecting between three and three and a half percent interest rate for, for the entire year. Last year was about four, four and a half. We expect or anticipating ballpark early in the game is taxable property value is increasing about 4%. And that doesn't necessarily mean home values will increase 4%, it just means a lot of homes are still playing catch-up with a 10% cap for prior years. And so we've built it at four and we'll, we'll adjust accordingly if, if we receive different information. But we will receive preliminary certified values in April. So we'll have a good, a good grasp of what they're looking at. Legislative update, I think the slide's the exact same as two years ago, with the exception we added the 89th legislative to it. We do accept or anticipate some kind of property tax relief, some legislation for vouchers. Hopefully we'll get some for sped funding, maybe SHARs. Basic allotment would be nice, but I'm not going to hold my breath. Student usage of cell phones, I do expect, that's not really a funding piece, but it'll be addressed from a legislative standpoint. And we do anticipate or hope for some increased school safety funding. You know, as we've gone through the process in this past year, adding a police department was, provides the extra layer of safety for our students. It does come with a cost, and that cost is about four times what the legislature funded districts. So I, hopefully, and what I've heard so far is that it's one of the things that is being, that is considered, is the sped funding as well, increasing sped funding as well as school safety funding. So those are the two. Anything else, we will gladly accept, but hopefully at a minimum, those two will be increased to help kind of handle those unfunded mandates or to help reduce the, using the district funds that are tight to help cover costs of other programs. So we'll come to you in January, but this, tonight, we're just kind of setting the base level assumptions. Discussion, we'll set the base level in January. We modify as new data is available, and then we plan to adopt the budget in June. So again, we expect to bring to the board the January 23rd meeting. We continue to monitor legislative bills. As you saw tonight, we are very, very active in the legislative committee. We have, we're, you know, we stay on top of it. We are very involved to make sure that we know what, what is and not being discussed. And then we will continue to update the board, February, March, April, May, and beyond if there are special sessions or things of that nature. So the pre-assumptions. So again, these are assumptions, and there's going to be a lot of assumptions. But as we go through the process, those assumptions get closer and closer and closer to, to reality and we narrow in. So we'll review the historical data, modify those assumptions as necessary when we hear what's going on in the legislative session, if any other talk, any other laws that are passed or, and, and, and all too often in our case, unfunded mandates, you know, we build those into the, into the already tight budget. So some of the key changes that we want to talk to you tonight is, while we still plan on maintaining or building our budget on 94% attendance. We're actually about 93.8, 93.9. We're a tad bit below that, but we do want to, we'll keep the 94% goal. We are striving to see what we can do to help with attendance. That's a national phenomenon. This is not a Land RISD, it's not a Texas, it's across the United States since COVID. So we used to be about 96%. Each 1% decrease in attendance is about $3 million in our budget. And so we're already starting out at 94%. You're already starting $6 million, you know, behind where we were pre-COVID. So historically, we've always kind of used the moderate growth model with the PASA report. So that terminology has changed a little bit. I know Jeremy has mentioned that in his presentations earlier tonight, as well as in, in prior in October with, with PASA here. So one of the things we want to do is actually go use the reduced amount, which maybe equates to what was the low model in, in prior, prior years. So that would be 42,448. We currently, this year's budget is based on 43,316, and our actual enrollment is about 42,500, 42,450. So it puts us more right, more in line. Obviously, if anything through the spring process and enrollment process shows anything different, we can make adjustments. But at this stage of the game, we want to make sure that we're, we're adopting our, or building our budget based on as accurate numbers as possible. So the, the next one is the one that we consider to get your feedback on. Typically, we've always come and we started at, at 2% compensation increase. We build it in the budget. We always know we can always go up based on whatever happens with the legislative session. There's a lot of things we have going on at this time, even outside of the scope of the legislative session. We are reminded, we have a TASB study going on that's looking at all of our pay scales. So what we'd like to do and talk to the board is originally start with a 0% on the compensation. We should get the TASB information in late January, February range. Let's get that, let's look at it, and then take that information and build into the budget, any pay raises or any compensation increase if we're, if we're able to. We'll have an idea a little bit. I don't know how far we'll know what's going on in the legislative session in February. But at this stage of the game, yeah, we're, at this stage of the game, we can still follow what we've always done in the past. We can always go up. We can always adjust, but it's just kind of, at this stage with so many things and the TASB, I just don't want to get the cart before the horse. Ideally, we still plan the goal, same goal, whatever we can do, we can adopt and finalize in May prior to our teachers leaving for summer break. But I just didn't want to, or I wanted to get your feedback on because my, my thought was not to start at, at that level as we had in the past, just with all the unique variables with the TASB and the legislative sessions. You can always ask questions.
Where, I know we talked about revisiting the stipends and what that looks like. What does this play into this? Is that still going to occur? Is that on the back burner?
The stipends?
Yes.
That is actually part of the TASB study. They're looking at stipends and, and compensation and, and pay grades and the narrowing and the width and the pay bands and everything, so.
When you say they're looking at all of those things, as part of that, looking at like a master schedule and how, what the, how that impacts funding and, or how that impacts our budget?
We are looking at master schedule. TASB is not looking at master schedule.
Okay.
But we are in the district, and that's a couple bullets down. That's the, Mo Casey did give us a report on kind of some efficiency opportunities within the master schedule and development and training opportunities.
I know a lot of trustees have been talking about that and, and kind of, not only dollars saved, but also, you know, a lot of discussion around student opportunities with that. I will say, 0% compensation starting from that, I, I don't like it. I feel like, I know there's a lot of factors that we don't know. And we, some of them we might not know for a while, but I think that our planning should include that 2% at, at the bare minimum. And, and then we can see where that, I don't know. So I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around starting at the 0% compensation when I know that, I don't, I don't want to start at 0%. Like, I don't, I don't want to be there. I want to know what is it going to take to do at least the 2%, right? So I'm having, I'm struggling with changing that assumption because I don't feel like that's a real assumption for me. I'm, I'm really assuming that we're going to start with at least 2%. And so if, if that's, if that's going to, I feel like that assumption should be factored into that budget because it's going to, we're going to be hard pressed to move this board, I think, away from, from, you know, a very minimum compensation increase.
I agree with Gloria. I, I want to see what this, the study and the staffing efficiencies that we've done. I mean, like Gloria said, we've heard a lot of conversations about the master schedule and the impact of that. I, I mean, I know, I know what our budget situation is, but we also have to keep our staff.
No, absolutely. And that's why, no matter which way we go, our goal is to still be able to have finalized in May before staff leave.
I'm with Gloria, though.
Okay.
I want to see the 2%. Sorry, Pete.
No, don't need to apologize. I mean, I'm just, you know, the, the, I'm just trying to make sure that we're in a position to where we don't do something here, and then the TASB study comes in, and then we have two things working against each other, or, or we find, you know, that's just kind of, from my perspective, it's not that, let, let me step back and rephrase. None of us want to start at zero. Okay, I mean, it's not like we want to, but just based on all the different variables coming in with the TASB study and some things of that nature, I just don't want to get us locked into this, and then this comes in, how do we mesh those without?
Can you help me understand a little bit more how that 0%, like having that assumption in there impacts the TASB study too? Because maybe I'm not seeing that piece.
Well, what, in my ideal world, I guess, you know, we would start with zero. We're going to get the TASB study back in February, and part of that study is going to have, here's what the salaries are, here's all the costs for the stipends increase to get us to market. Whether we do it all at one time, whether we phase it in over a one, two, three-year period, we have all that. Then we can take that information and say, okay, a 2% raise, but the stipends are this, the expanding our pay grades are this, how do we blend these two together? And to be able to come back to you in February, March, or April, what does that look like?
It was not me that time, I promise. It wasn't.
If you really don't want zero, Gloria, you don't have to turn on my mic, okay?
Nope. Nope, we're going to meet you now. I hear what you're saying, and that makes sense, but couldn't it be, our assumption is still two, and when we get the TASB study, we're going to look at it, okay, we're going to look at it with the two. Okay, this is what it looks like with the two. This isn't what it looks like starting at a zero. I, I just feel like I, I still don't want to lose that piece in there. And so I, does it cause that much, is that a significant complication in having the 2% assumption in there? Bringing in the TASB study and saying, this is what it looks like if we do this and this of the TASB study with the built-in 2%? And we see that and we may be like, oh, okay, we're going to have to think about this a different way. And, and then you're going to show us that, okay, if, if it's without the 2% and bringing in these TASB pieces, I just, I don't want to lose sight of the 2%. And I feel that it's easy to do that if it's not factored in as an assumption moving forward.
No, I, I fully understand and, and respect that and, you know, in, in part quite actually agree with it. But the concern that we have, that I have is, what if we say 2%? And then we come back in TASB and TASB says, hey, these two pay groups are at market, and these two are way behind, and this one's above. And so everybody hears, we do 2% in January, they are, they go home, they calculate, hey, what's my raise going to be? And then it puts, it paints us in a corner where we can't make any adjustments based on what the TASB comes back in at. Like you, we definitely want to give a raise. I, I mean, I'm really, it's going to be an interesting process and, and how much do we dip into fund balance if we need to, or how much, those questions, those discussions will come up in the spring. But I just, my, my concern is I don't want to get us, I don't want to get us to a position where we have to choose between one or the other when, if we only can wait a month or two, we can actually take them and get the best of both worlds. But what we're able to do and maximize, like you said, the stipend piece, some of these other things. And that, that's kind of where I'm coming at from.
That makes sense. That, no, that helps when I'm thinking through what you said with the TASB pieces, looking at these different population groups, right, of where they're at, and then also thinking about stipends and how that. So thank you for helping me kind of walk through that. I, I could support that. Okay, thank you.
I think it was because I was in this chair.
Okay, it was that chair, okay.
It is a little clearer, so we're good. Just, I'm sure we have more questions. I'm not trying to jump ahead, but just after you get past the TASB study, we did, we talked about it in that discussion, but we do have the Mo and Casey study, which gave us some, some good headway into the master schedule and some efficiencies and some kind of, we're in a very early process of taking that and digesting it into what are some of the, these rules and how do we do some training? And, and I would do want to be completely, you know, upfront, even when we start looking at these rules and doing some of these strings, a lot of this is going to be a one, two-year implementation, three-year process to really fine-tune and tweak. And we're looking at some software that will help with that. So we're just trying to, how does that all work in together? I wish we were a speedboat, we could just turn on a dime, but we're like, more like the Titanic, and we're really, it takes a while to, to turn that ship. So for us to implement something, we want to make sure we do it right. So I'd rather go slow and do it right than rush into it and have it implode, okay? So we want to make sure that we, we get the right way. So it may be not just all this spring, it may be this spring and parts of the fall and next spring till we actually maximize the, we may implement some of the low-hanging fruit pieces in the next year more, than the year after that, we really were in 80, 100%. The Stetson Associates on the, gave us the report on the special ed program at the campus and then broke it down between campus and central administration. We've got that, and then we just got the draft for the, the PMS review, and they're still working on getting that to a final copy. So all those things that we've been working on, we've had a great conversation. I met with the high school principals last week. We met with the principals and all staff directors today and had a good budget conversation for the big picture. So this all lines up with kind of what that, what that process is and what we're striving Did you have something? Are there any questions or?
Yeah, I've, well, I've been listening, but that first bullet's still. The, the attendance rate of 94%. I'm just, I've just been wondering whether our, we have any data that tells us what percentage could we have gotten back if, because there's some students that could come after attendance is taken. They're here that day, they just come after.
Yeah.
And so I think there's still a lot of confusion or lack of knowledge as to the time attendance is taken for funding purposes versus for other purposes, like truancy and making up hours in high school and what have you. And so one is getting that education out to, to everybody, but even just for our own modeling, just trying to understand, could we have rescued half a percent or 1% for these kids that showed up right after attendance, they showed up that day, but it was after attendance was taken?
Yeah, and depending on why they missed that early, if it was a doctor's appointment, then yeah, there's a process, you can go. One of the things that we, that was implemented this year was prior, if you had 48 hours to turn in a doctor's note. That's not state law, that was a Land RISD policy. I don't know if you go back and you remember when you were elementary, middle, or high school? I would be lucky to get a note in six weeks later, okay? So, but we have had that discussion, and now we allow notes to be, we, we request them to be 48 hours. But now if it is brought in late, we do accept it, and that counts as, as being present on that day and for attendance purposes. That was a small thing. It's not, obviously from our data, still 93.8, it hasn't changed a whole lot. But we just went over, I gave this a copy of a presentation to the high school principals last week. We went over it in cabinet. KD ISD has, has done some really neat things with attendance. They've presented at some of their last conferences, and so we're looking at... we're looking at those and getting, uh, getting some ideas. Uh, part of that PMS review is, what are our processes in place? Do our employees that take attendance, do they have enough time? Are they given the time? Or are they constantly being called out to help sub or to help fill in the gap at the front desk, and they're not able to, to, to suspend the time that they need to make sure that those students that do provide their notes are marked as, as present? So, we're looking at it very holistically, it's not, uh, I mean, I wish it was a magic one thing, I mean, it would be a lot easier, but we are looking at here, and slowly, just kind of scaling it back in and figuring out ways, uh, where, where's the biggest thing, the smallest, the one thing or two things they can do to get the biggest bang for that buck, and then what do we do for the next phase and, and to get that? Because it is, it's, it's like losing $6 million, and you're, you're starting, you know, you're, you're running the 100-meter dash, right? And you're, and you're like six meters behind the starting line, so, I mean, unless you're just really faster than everybody else, I mean, it just puts you behind the curve, and it, it's hard to play catch-up. And, and it's not just at Leander, it's, it's many districts. And the next piece is, how do you change behavior? I mean, how do you change, uh, and then it leads to excessive absenteeism, and if you don't catch that at the early ages, then that affects students all throughout their middle and high school years. And so, there's a lot of factors that that affects academic, that affects achievement, that affects test score. I mean, there's, it's a key piece, attendance is great, and that's the funding, but there's other areas that that affects as well. So, we are looking at it from a very broad perspective.
I will follow up with my questions offline, because I am very stuck on the 0%.
Okay.
I am not okay with that, but if I ask, I will be here for an hour, and nobody wants to do that, so I'll follow up with you later.
All right. I appreciate that.
I will ask you to do one favor, though, will you just recall, um, for the board, what our 3% parameter is? We talked about this the last time, um, and, and kind of where we are in terms of projections. We showed you that three-year projection. I just want to remind you where we are, because it's not just about the TASB study, um, it's about where we're starting from and what we are required to do to bring to you as a final budget. And in order to get there, um, we're going to have to do some things. And so, we want to make sure that we keep our lens as wide open as possible to start. Remember, we're in December, and so, very early on, even as we come back in the 23rd of January, things will have changed. As we come back in February, things will change, but right now, we need our lens as wide open as possible, so that as things happen, we can shift and adapt. Um, we know we can always go up. Once we say something, it's very difficult to come back down. And so, that, that's just part of where we're trying to say, let's just, give us some starting point of wide open, so that we can adapt and, and flex as we go, depending on what happens.
Yeah, uh, so our 3% threshold, I'll use round numbers, is about 13 million a deficit. Uh, so, looking at next year's, if we do use the, the different numbers, more actual, uh, and we take out all the things that, assumptions that we don't need to have in there, and we do take the 2% and reduce it to zero, uh, we do add 3 million in for the TASB piece, because we really don't know what that is, but just a placeholder, that's not a 2% raise, but that's just a placeholder for some of the other things. We are, we're, we're at about a deficit of about 15 million above the, the, the 3% threshold, so about 28 million, we can go 13, so we're about 15 above that. Day one, starting out before any legislative updates, anything of that nature. Uh, now, it's, within that expenditure is, is our current staffing, so we've, we adjusted our enrollment on the revenue side, we decreased, we have yet to come in and say, what does that mean? If, you know, if we go down 800 kids, is that six teachers, is that an AP here, depending on, that has not come into play, that's not going to be 15 million, but that, the expenditure still have current year as of, budgeted as of this piece, we have not gone in and adjusted. We won't get the campus amounts, the new amounts for the enrollment until January, then HR will go in and say, okay, hey, here's your enrollment now, you'll lose one teacher, you'll lose this, you'll lose that, and that, that is not in the budget at this time, that's, well, it's in the budget as an expense, we have not removed that out yet. So, that 15 million is still a little high, but it's, what's coming out is not going to make it much lower.
And, and to be clear, we had a, a great conversation with our leadership today, um, and we want to be sure that everybody understands that this is not about how we find people to cut out of the system, this is really about making sure that we understand all the factors that come into play, and we've talked a lot about opportunities that we have to increase revenue, um, through things like weighted funding in CTE and some other areas, um, and then lots of other ways to examine how we decrease expenditures. And so, we want to just be sure that this is very, very early on in the process, and that's why we're setting pre-assumptions the way we are, because we have to have the runway and the flexibility to draw all of our stakeholders into the conversation, um, and really make sure that their needs and their voices are heard, and that we have then the ability to flex and, and try to do the very best that we can, given the resources that we start to see appearing through the legislative session, um, as we march through the spring.
Yeah, we're looking at it on, on both sides of the equation. It's not just expense, but it has revenue as well. Uh, but moving forward on the, oh, now we got it. Uh, so, looking at your historical trend, uh, again, we'll make the adjustment in the 42 number, which is right at about what we got this current year. So, looking at our projections, uh, we, you know, we're higher than what we actually came in at, so that's why we're doing that adjustment and going to the, the reduced amount for next year. Uh, and part of that is, you have fewer students per home in the new home could be, being constructed, uh, birth rate has remained constant, however, we are getting smaller kindergarten classes, uh, for a host of reasons, whether they're being homeschooled, whether they're going to charter schools, uh, and then some intangible trends, it's just, right now, there's dissentment toward, kind of an anti toward public education, so that's, that may be a factor in it as well. So, the three scenarios for growth, uh, that the pass of report has mentioned, it's kind of, again, I used to be high-low and, or high-moderate and low, uh, so we're going to go with the 42, 387, or actually, back up a year, in that 42 range, and that is kind of the reduced amount, which is right online with what our actual is for this current, the current number is right now. Subject to adjustment, based on needing new information, but, but looking forward, that'll be, uh, that's kind of the number we felt would be using, would be most accurate. Uh, so the priorities in Big Rocks, uh, so we kind of grouped them and kind of put them into three, uh, umbrellas, if you will, that everything would fall under, and so the three that we came up with is, one is support students, uh, and support student, sorry, student support and experience, uh, system efficiencies for maximizing revenue, and then staffing effectiveness and efficiency. Those are the, the three, the three buckets or the, the three umbrellas that we felt everything could easily fall under that we were looking at. Uh, so that's what we're using as our, our guiding principles as we begin the 25, 26 budget, and, and probably a year or two after as well. Uh, so just looking real briefly at 23, 24, at the actual, so the original budget, uh, you know, it was 490 million, almost $491 million, and 494 total expenditures, uh, total net change in fund balance budget, it was about 6.5 deficit. Uh, the final budget, there's a lot of changes in that budget with Cenobial II and reducing that, sorry, the compressed rate, uh, later in the year. So, revenues went down, uh, however, our recapture payment went down as well, so the 438.5, and then our expenditures are 457. So, in budget, we were looking at, uh, almost a $24 million deficit, but when you look at the actual, our, our actual, we had a 4.6, 4.7 million expenditures exceeding revenue, and then, even though there's not an asterisk there, just remember, there was $7 million in Sharps funding we did not receive in 23, 24. Otherwise, if we had been, our revenues would have exceeded, uh, our expenditures by about I know we've had some discussion and great question, and I appreciate that, but if there's any more discussion or any questions that we have, or if you want to talk to me offline, more than happy to, to have, to answer those questions, okay?
I think we're processing some of that, and I'm sure we will reach out to you offline, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Um, we will move on over to our next item then, and that is item C7C3, which is consider approval of a resolution casting votes for an individual to the Travis Central Appraisal District TCAD Board of Directors. And I think we already have a motion ready to go, because we hit it ready.
I move the Board of Trustees approve the resolution casting its 155 votes to John Havenstreich to serve on the Travis Central Appraisal District Board of Directors as presented.
A second. Francesca makes motion, Anna seconds. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Five in favor, motion passes. And that moves us on over to item 7C4, consider approval of donating bus number 1258, a surplus 2006 international school bus to the City of Leander Fire Department for training purposes.
We've got a, we have an old bus, that's basically blown engines, 2006, not worth a whole lot of, you know, of even taking it to auction, we wouldn't, cannot get a whole lot of money. Uh, the City of Leander Fire Department has expressed some interest in using this bus as a, to do some training, and hopefully, it will provide them the greatest training in the world, and hopefully, they never have to use that training, but however, if, if in case that, something like that arises, they would at least be able to, they'll have the, the training opportunity. So, uh, the policy allows, uh, the administration, the superintendent to, to donate or to allow that based on policy. However, since it's with the two, uh, two governmental entities, uh, we just felt it would be, uh, best and the most transparent to be able to take it to the Board of Trustees and give the opportunity to, uh, to make that donation to the City of Leander Fire Department, uh, so they can be best prepared in case of any emergency that they may arise in, in, in doing their duty.
I move the Board of Trustees approve the donation of the 2006 school bus number 1258, VIN number ending in O268, to the City of Leander Fire Department for training purposes.
A second.
Anna makes motion, Francesca seconds. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Five in favor, motion passes. And still you, Pete. So, item 7C5, consider approval of the FY25 Budget Amendment Number Six.
Uh, tonight, the administration brings you Fiscal Year 25 Budget Amendment Number Six. The main piece of this budget amendment is, uh, to add three sergeants, uh, five police officers. Uh, these numbers were part of the original proposal for the, the Police Department, uh, given by Mr. Brian Miller about a year or so ago. Uh, we do have one position that was not part of that original proposal, which we'd like to bring to the Board, which is, I believe, was included in the, in the Board update, this Board memo this past weekend, and that is a communications coordinator that is specifically to the Police Department to help, uh, to help communicate, uh, anything on the Police Department side to the community and be that liaison to serve between those two departments.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the FY25 Budget Amendment Number Six as presented.
A second.
Anna makes motion, Francesca seconds. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Five in favor, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 7C6, Business and Finance Monthly Reports.
Uh, members of the Board of Trustees, we have, uh, four, uh, monthly reports, I'll just briefly give a high update. The monthly bond report gives us, uh, status of the few remaining funds from 2007, and the 17, 21, and 23 bond. There is nothing on the report, uh, that is out of the ordinary. Uh, monthly, the next report is our monthly financial report, uh, for the month of October. Uh, again, no, nothing that's out of the ordinary, uh, on, on this report. Uh, on, on those, on the monthly reports, and we have our monthly investment report, just real high level, we earn $416,000 in interest in the general fund, and $361,000 for the month of October in the Capital Projects Fund. Then we have our monthly tax collection report for the first month of the year, so there's not a lot of activity in that fund at this time, but we have collected about $5.2 million. The bulk of those monies start coming in in December and January, but there's, other than that, there's really nothing on that report out of the ordinary as well. But more happy to answer any questions on any of those reports, if there, the Board members have any.
Board, any questions? All right, thank you, we appreciate all that information, and thank you for the discussion.
All right, thank you very much.
It is 8:55 PM, and the Board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation or attorney-client privileged matter, Texas Government Code 551.071, deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignments, duties, and evaluations of personnel and public officers, Texas Government Code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed, Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation in consideration of the employment of the Deputy Superintendent of Learning and Innovation, Texas Government Code 551.074, Board Member Representation on Board and District Administrative Committees. No action will be taken in closed session, any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the Board returns to open session. returns to open session. It is 9:12 PM, and the board is returning to open session. Board members, do you have any motions related to closed session agenda items?
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Christopher Clark for Deputy Superintendent of Learning and Innovation, one-year probationary employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale, policies, and contracts of Leander Independent School District for the 2024-2025 school year.
I second. Wait, wait, wait. Y'all can't clap until after we vote. That's jinxing things if y'all clap before we vote. Y'all can't do that. Sorry. We have a motion by Francesca, a second by Anna. Is there any further discussion? Are y'all sure? Y'all don't want to discuss this some more? Like, do we have some questions? Okay, with no further discussion, all those in favor? Five in favor, motion passes now. Congratulations to us. Congratulations to you. And, right? It's like, it's all good. And now it is 9:13 PM, and having no further business, this meeting of the Leander Board of Trustees is adjourned.